I'm doing good. It's a beautiful day in the neighborhood.
You see all the cars out at the fairgrounds?
No, not yet. I've been having work.
Somebody ate all my candy, I mean.
You'll be in touch with the lady.
You know, uh, Timothy, one of the assistants in your office.
Getting a little bit of sugar because we wanted to do.
Oh, no, I was just at D and O.
Hey, how are you?
Great, great, guys.
I like your back. I like your back.
Oh, thank you, Patrick.
I like your back.
All right, let me get something else.
They're old. I just, I'm filling them down. It's sticky.
Ooh.
If you let. I don't even need it now.
Either way.
Yeah, I know you. You won't do it.
He resigned. He retired. So now he's chief over.
John Fulgenzi?
Okay.
Like, that's where I started. I go, is that the same? He's a nice, nice guy. I was at his party. I went to his retirement.
Chair will call the June 7th, 2022 meeting in the City Council order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Will do. Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Fulgenzi.
Here.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Here.
Alderwoman DeSensio.
Present.
Alderman McMiniman.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley.
Present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mayor Langfelder.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, a quorum is present.
Thank you. Uh, first, I'd like to call up Capital City Bourbon Journey restaurateurs. Give a, uh, presentation. If you'd introduce yourself, we'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council members. Uh, my name is Mike Novel. I'm with Indigo Restaurant here in Springfield, Illinois. Um, I'm here to represent the 11 members of the Springfield area Bourbon ambassadors, uh, along with Tori from, uh, Slaughterhouse and Chris Hankin from a few of, uh, his places, uh, and Mick Wanless. Um, we'd like to pass out a pamphlet that basically details what this is all about and what this is going to be for visitors coming to Springfield. And if they visit all 11 of the restaurants and get a stamp in this little pamphlet, then, uh, they get a little free gift from us as a, as a group. And, uh, as the, uh, basically started with us getting together like-minded restaurants that have a lot of, uh, nice bourbons on their list and, uh, got with Mike Murphy and Scott Dahl and this thing just kind of grew. And, Mr. Mayor, we've got a gift for you as well for your help and your support. And, uh, I think it's going to be big for Springfield. It's, uh, it's definitely a, a growing segment. Bourbon is highly sought after. The 11 members of our group have at least 50 bourbons on their list and five that are allocated that you can't get a lot of places. Um, we did also the, what you've got here, if you want to go ahead and give the, uh, the package to the mayor. Yep. Uh, thank Julie as well. She was a big, uh, big part in helping us, uh, organize this.
You know, I like this, but I like to have a bottle of bourbon.
The bottles of bourbon, um, are at each 11 restaurants. We actually, one of the cool things is.
After the meeting.
We were able to do a barrel pick, actually, and that's what, uh, we've got for the mayor. This is a specific to, um, the 11 restaurants that are in our group. We got to split a full barrel that we handpicked from Barrel Spirits. Uh, it's a blend of 18 to 14-year whiskeys that's been aged in Armagnac barrels. So it's one of a kind. Only, you can only get it to 11 rest- restaurants that are in our group and, uh, we just wanted to say thank you.
Sharon is caring, Mayor.
Also, we've got a plaque for the mayor. There's our, we've got these plaques hanging in every one of our restaurants, uh, and bars. And, uh, just to, just to, when, when people are coming into town, not just locals, but, you know, convention people, we want them to know that, uh, this is where you go get the good stuff.
That's good.
Sharon is caring, Mayor.
What's that?
Caring is caring.
Break it open after the meeting?
There you go.
Do we have a license?
That's right. So this is from the, uh, specialized bourbon?
Yes, yes, it is. As you can see, that's our logo. It's the Springfield area Bourbon ambassadors. And on the front, it's got the little sticker that says it's handpicked by us. SABHA is our, is our acronym, if you will. It's really good stuff. It's 122.6 proof, so.
Thank you, Mayor.
Be careful.
Don't drop it.
Do you each represent one of the 11 restaurants?
Yes, so Mick represents West Woods Lodge, myself for Indigo Restaurant, Chris for Public House 29, Maui's Q, and, um, Lake Point Grill, and then Tori with Slaughterhouse in, in Auburn.
Alderman Redpath. Uh, thank you all for, uh, take, undertaking this, uh, this venture because I tell you, we need everything we can get to get people moving back around in Springfield since the pandemic. Hopefully, this will drive some movement and get, uh, get businesses back up on their feet. So thank you a lot. I'm coming through.
Oh, yeah. Here we go. Now we're talking.
So once they visit, uh, the 11 stops and they go to, uh, Convention Visitors Bureau and, uh, pick up the gift?
Yes. They can do one of two things. They can go to the Convention, uh, Bureau and get a, a free gift. We don't list what the gift is because it's going to be ever-changing. But right now, it's a challenge coin that's got our logo and the Capital Area, um, uh, Bourbon Journey logo on it. We can also mail those in if they're out of town and they can, they don't have a chance to go to the Bureau. They can mail it in and then they will send them back the completed book with the challenge coin.
Right.
Just another little, little thing to make them feel special about completing something. And the overall, uh, the interest that we've got from local has been very, very good. Um, a lot of people are pretty excited about it and, uh, I think it's going to be good for the city.
Most definitely. It's, uh, great that everybody's working together, even though, you know, people view you as competitors. You're working together to help each other out and.
Yeah.
That's what it's all about and, uh, getting people, as Alderman Redpath said, to visit all areas of, not only in Springfield, but outside. I think there's a, uh, facility in Chatham, maybe, and.
Uh, we have, uh, Auburn for Slaughterhouse and Rochester. We've got Public House 29 and then the rest of them are in, in Springfield.
Right. Anybody else care to say anything?
Oh, I, I said that, Mayor.
Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you. I, first of all, thank you. This is a lot of fun. Um, is there a timeframe that people have to get all the 11 drinks in or?
No, there's not. Uh, we don't recommend doing it all in the same day.
So you read my, my, my second question.
But no, there's not a timeframe because we want people that, that are on, coming through for conventions. Maybe they can only hit three this time and maybe it'll be a year from now they hit the others. They might not get the same free gift because it'll be something different at that time.
Right.
But no, there's no timeframe on it whatsoever. And all they have to do is buy a drink.
And get it.
At one of our establishments and they get a, they get a stamp.
Perfect. Well, I, and I really appreciate that we have drinks, suggested drinks to order.
Yes.
That's, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Do you, um, do you have the name, um, and I, I'm sorry, I was looking real quickly. Do you have the name of the Springfield, um, barrel in here so that we can ask for that or do we just?
No, because we're, we're doing multiple picks. Uh, the first barrel pick we had was from Barrel Spirits, um, that I just described. Uh, we also have in the works a Maker's Mark barrel pick coming, uh, Jack Daniel's Single Barrel we're working on as well as a Woodford Reserve.
Very exciting.
This, uh, bourbon, you know, still, we're still passing it around. Um, where was it distilled?
I believe it's Lawrence, Lawrenceburg, Kentucky. Yeah. Well, part, part of it is distilled in Indiana. It's, it's actually a, this particular bottle is actually a blend. Barrel Spirits doesn't distill their own stuff. They source from other places. And so like this particular one, it's, it's a, a blend of two different whiskeys. One is a 14-year from Indiana and the other is an 18-year from Kentucky. And then they blended it. They're very good blenders, um, to get really good flavor profiles for whiskey. But then after they've combined those, then like we said, then it went in Armagnac cask, which is a French brandy, just to get more of a flavor profile, that sweet caramel kind of textury brandy. Um, so we, we picked that personally and really liked it.
I, I asked the question because it's got a Springfield label on the front, which is good for Springfield. And as we pass this around, please don't leave this with Hanauer in Ward 10. Make sure you claim it back.
Alderman Hanauer. That was a good lead in.
He's going to keep it.
Um, also, I, I would be remiss with, uh, our, our owner of the cab company here. If you do go out, try to, try to tag this in a day or two, uh, make sure you call cab, uh, when you drive so that, uh, our police don't, uh, have to, uh, arrest you.
So again, thank you. We really appreciate, uh, what you're doing to, um, broaden the experience in Springfield. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have, uh, Legacy Point, uh, Steve Lucre and Dirk McCormick. Do you have an update?
Holy shit. Are you kidding me? You got any booze?
I don't. Not right yet.
So the mayor had asked us to do an update, um, and so we've been working on the PUD for a year now. Tonight's on consent agenda, so we get our zoning for the sports complex. We've handed out an update to all of you. If there's any questions, our timing, we think we can smell the finish line. So we think in about 60 to 90 days, uh, we're hopeful that we're moving dirt out there to start the sports complex for Springfield, Illinois. Questions?
That's the least I've ever heard you talk.
Alderman Gregory?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question. The, the blue line around here, I see, um, um, winter, winter season of 2023. You said the, the indoor would be opening and that, would, would that be this first blue box right here, this area here?
Yeah, so that's a little confusing. When we talk about the indoor facility, we talked about doing this in two phases, the outdoor and then the indoor. The indoor is actually the field house that we constructed in Phase 2. The indoor that we referred to in that phase is actually enhancement of the outdoor. It's an air structure.
Right.
That goes over 11 versus 11 soccer field and then also other areas in there. So that'll all be can, started construction here. That will open up the first. We're trying to hit the season for tourism, which will be that winter. And then the outdoor would open up in the following spring.
Okay. And, and my last question. Talk to me about the fun zones.
About the what?
The fun zone.
Fun zone is the amenities that typically if you go to a sports complex, you'll have different things. Could be a splash pad, could be a jungle gym, could be a different things.
I appreciate it.
And ours blends from all the way within the sports complexes, all the way to the, uh, back door of Shields.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other, uh, questions? We're looking forward to it. I think, uh, once it's up and running, I, I don't think everybody will actually realize the impact it's going to have. It's going to be off the charts. And so we appreciate, uh, your group's investments as well as all the other local investors and those, you know, coming into our community because of it. So thank you very much.
We appreciate your hard work and I will tell you this, the city of Springfield has embraced this project. For us going out and getting naming rights, sponsorships, everything, it's been well received and we're very appreciative.
And, uh, I'm not sure if you can comment on it. Uh, there's also, uh, you know, the soccer group, athletics, uh.
We will not announce anything.
Well, uh, do you have anything to do with that at all?
Uh, the US Health team is here. Uh, we've had conversations with them and yes, we're working with them.
Yeah, but they have, uh, just as announcement, I think they have a game this Wednesday, so.
Yes.
If anybody hadn't seen them, uh, your chances go out, I think at 6 o'clock or 6:30 at SHG on Wednesday.
Yes. Very good group to work with.
Great.
All right.
Are you, are you working with the Springfield Soccer Association too?
Uh, we are.
Okay, just checking.
We won't announce anything, though. Anybody that we're working with, that's their privilege to announce.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Alderwoman DeSensio.
I just want to say thank you for sticking with it. It's been a long process, so I appreciate it.
I think it's been a well-worked for all of us.
Agreed.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Chair will entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the May 17th, 2022 City Council meeting. Approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Moving second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading ordinances in the record of this City Council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
The move in second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is consent agenda. The chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda in the record of this City Council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
Moving second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. Not here, it's not.
It's blank.
It's all good.
And the consent agenda passes. 10 voting yes, none voting no. Agenda number 2021-337-2022-157 remain tabled in committee. Next item on the agenda is 2022-163, an ordinance amending Chapter 80, Section 80.08 ABC and Section 82.02A A1 of the 1988 City of Springfield Code of Ordinances. And I think we want to hold for.
Yeah, what, or, uh, you may recall that we were working on some alternative language. We would like to commit that or provide that to the committee of the whole, uh, at the, at the next committee of the whole meeting next Tuesday. That makes sure it can be published and, and presented prior to being, you know, voted on at the following council meeting.
Take it back to committee.
Alderman Hanauer.
If, if you would like, that would be fine, or otherwise we'll present it. So it's, you know, we can make sure it's published and out there.
Send it back to committee.
Second.
Pretty good. And we will have language to present, uh, at that time.
The move in second to send it back to committee. Any discussion? Alderman McMiniman.
That's a good idea to send it back to committee. I just want to make a comment related to this issue of pedestrians on the roadways. And this is for, uh, our chief, our SPD police chief, uh, coming into Springfield yesterday at where, um, where Jefferson and, uh, um, help me out here. What's the main road, uh, eastbound, westbound?
Veterans Park.
No.
Dirksen?
Say again.
Dirksen.
No, the parallel roads, Jefferson and.
Madison.
Oh, Madison.
Madison, yeah, but Clearlake before it gets to Madison, we're, Clearlake is coming in and it, it intersects with, uh, I guess that'd be Madison, right, just outside of 11th Street.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So there's a median strip there.
Right.
And for about two or three months, we had a chair out there so that someone could sit on the chair and communicate with, uh, vehicles going by. Then the, the chair was taken away. And that's the way it should happen. There shouldn't be a chair in the median strip, you know, you, you, you shouldn't be a bicycle. It shouldn't be, you know, we've got an ordinance about pedestrians in the median strip. But police chief, when we see a chair in there, take it away. Um, now you can wait for the person sitting on the chair to leave if you want. Wait till nighttime to do it. It, you, you use the discretion you want to use, but that's unacceptable to have a chair out there in the median strip. So, um, since we're talking about pedestrians, um, in the median strips, just want to make that comment because it, uh, it's just inappropriate.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is 2022-223, an ordinance approving the appointment of Yolanda L. McKinney to the Springfield Community Relations Commission. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2022-23 on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
The move in second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes. 10 voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is 2022-230, an ordinance accepting proposal number UW22-21 with Lender Construction Inc. for the Lime Pond Relocation LPR project in an amount not to exceed $16,522,278 and authorizing a supplemental appropriation of the same amount to fund said project and further authorizing the use of the Environmental and Regulatory Initiatives and Rebate Fund ER IRF for said project for the Office of Public Utilities for Emergency Passage. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2022-230 on final passage.
So moved.
Second. The move in second. Any discussion? Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you, Mayor. I've not everything touched. Uh, yeah, um, could Doug Brown come up and just kind of explain this a little bit and give us more detail on what's happening? And also maybe why this is an emergency passage. We've known this was coming, right?
So the lime ponds, if you recall, basically it's a, a byproduct from cleaning the lake water and the treatment process for our water treatment facility. The lime ponds are currently basically on, on, on top of the, one of the old sections of the old lakeside ash ponds. So in order to close the ash ponds, we have to build new lime ponds where we can then, you know, put those into service. And that's expected to be complete, uh, October 2023. So, uh, basically we're building these immediately, um, east of the existing location, um, at that, at that facility out there. So, um, I think we had three bidders total. Uh, this is the lowest bidder. And it's, like I said, it's coming out of the environmental fund. That's kind of what we set up for is to, to help take care of the ash ponds issues. And, uh, this is the first step that we have to take in order to do that.
Alderman Hanauer?
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I had some, I'm sorry. I had some questions, Mayor. Thank you. So this is going to empty all the existing lime ponds into these new, and these are concrete structures?
The, these will be new, um, new structures, so we're not going to be re, like, taking the material and moving it over there. We would dispose of the material that's there now like we normally would.
Okay. And these are, and I'm sorry, I, I, I didn't, I was working and I didn't see any of this until, except that it was coming.
I'm sorry, yes, yeah.
Um, so how thick a concrete structure is this?
It's pretty thick. I, I don't really recall. I don't, Todd, do you remember off the top of your head? The floor is like six inches and the, and the, yeah, the walls are a foot and a half. There's also other, uh, uh, protective layers underneath it. This is designed well beyond anything that's required in the water industry, um, or by the Illinois EPA, uh, for the, for the, uh, basically for water, uh, treatment plants. So we just wanted to take a step above and beyond, especially since they're wooded adjacent to the ash ponds, just to protect the groundwater for future, any kind of future possible regulations that might come.
And this has us all in shape so that we can then empty the ash ponds and be in compliance with federal requirements?
Right. So the next step, once these are done, then we can move towards finalizing everything for the closure of the ash ponds.
And we don't have a fin, decision on how that's going to happen yet, right?
No.
We will get a little more notice than this for that one?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah. Unfortunately, with the US EPA, um, issue, we, we have to move as fast as we can.
Right. No, I, I understand that. I, I appreciate. I just, I just wanted, you know, just a little clarification. Thank you.
Alderman Hanauer?
Yeah, thank you. Doug, how, how, uh, so, so we've had to ramp this up. When, when were we anticipating originally going, doing this? We were going to do this regardless, right?
That's correct. Uh, I mean, the original schedule still holds for October of 2023. And that's what we provided to the US EPA for their, um, you know, the issue we had a few months ago.
Right.
And that, that schedule has not changed at all. Um, but, uh, what has changed is basically that, you know, getting the bids in and getting the schedule for the contractor, what they think it's going to take is trying to, you know, we tried to award it as fast as we could. So they vetted it out, uh, spent quite a few meetings to try to vet, um, some of the technical issues with the bids to make sure that they're going to do, you know, exactly what we wanted. So, and then they got it to us as soon as they could.
And then we're waiting, we're currently waiting on, uh, the response on, on what from the US EPA, just so everybody.
Well, basically the US EPA, when they originally notified us that basically they would make a decision sometime in the near future, um, that maybe our app, you know, our application's incomplete and then set the deadline. So we submitted basically, resubmitted, I should say, the, the same evidence, um, that basically outlined everything that they said we didn't provide. And then, um, also provide additional information from MISO testimony. Uh, we also, uh, uh, supplemented the, our filing, I guess you might say, uh, with NERC's, um, assessment of the country's electrical grid. They did that last month, so we decided that they should see that as well. I mean, they should already see that at their federal agency, but wanted to make sure we put it in front of them. Um, so I, I suspect that they are going to slow walk this a little bit more now in response to everything that's going on in the country with, uh, with the electrical grid.
Alderman Donlin?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Doug, just a quick question. What's the present balance of the environmental fund?
25 million.
25 million. This utilizes 16.5?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
And, and, and just on, uh, it usually averages, um, I think about 2.2 to 2.8 million a year roughly on average.
Thank you.
Alderman Redpath?
So Doug, what's the strategy of using a concrete containment, uh, instead of just to dig in the ponds like we did before? Or is it easier to clean out? What's the deal?
It's more, it's more, um, just protecting anything from going, you know, leaving that, uh, that containment. So it's more about, you know, stopping any groundwater, uh, you know, infiltration whatsoever.
So that, uh, so, uh, once we get that in place and we clean out the rest of them, we will not have any exposed lime ponds. Is that what we're saying?
Yeah, yes. So the lime ponds that we, the new ones, uh, basically, they would be, they would be, uh, very well protected from the groundwater.
Okay.
The best that you can do.
Um, are we getting ready to have, uh, contract, I mean, negotiations with the coal company from Williamsville?
Uh, you know, they, we, we've, uh, talked about that as far as, uh, we set up a meeting with them. So hopefully here, I can't recall, maybe in a couple of weeks, you know, we'll, we'll kind of hear from them personally.
Reason I ask that is because didn't we, uh, didn't they haul away a lot of our stuff and, and, and take care of that for us?
Well, we, we have backhaul stuff for, for ash if we can't dispose of it. Um, but I think we've been disposing quite a bit of it here lately, uh, but they, they do not help with the lime pond though. That, so that is all done through, uh, yeah, through separate contracts. It is for agricultural use, really the lime.
So it's not the ash?
It's not the ash, no.
Thank you.
Alderman Williams?
Yes. So you had said you, it was moving east of the location.
Mm-hmm.
Um, how far east? Like, uh, does it get up to, um, the ramps?
Uh, no, that was, that would be more west. So if, if, if you're looking, if you're standing like, um, on Stevenson Drive looking north to the ash ponds, um, essentially it's like the ash ponds are right here. It would be just immediately east of it. So we have basically, we had a, I would say, an old house that had some offices in it for our environmental folks. And we've closed that office and moved those people out last year and we're going to be demoing the building and putting the ponds there.
Okay, so would it get any closer to the community that's there that, uh?
It does, it does. And we, we're building berms around it, um, and as well as more trees and stuff like that. We did, we did like a community outreach to all the neighbors right there that are immediately adjacent.
In Green Castle and?
Yeah, um, just on that. The ones that everybody that kind of backs up to that area.
Okay.
So we wanted them to see the plans and we invited them to basically an open house right there. And, uh, and they did have concerns, you know, and that was, that was imperative that we, uh, kind of reassured them that we are going to build, you know, a, a pretty good sized berm just to help block the views, trees, uh, add more trees in between like the ravines that are through there to help block, uh, you know, any, any views, that kind of thing. Um, but the biggest thing is, is that, I mean, we looked at all the locations that we could and this is really the only location that will work. Um, the, uh, but the, when, when we're done with the lime pond relocation and the closing of the ash ponds, the whole area will be much, much more aesthetically pleasing for everybody.
Yeah, I, I think the berms is down so as long as they know that.
Yes, yes, yeah.
Thank you.
Alderman Hanauer?
And I apologize. I forgot a question that I wanted to ask. Um, so this, was this price al- already figured in when we were looking at closing the ash ponds? Um, I know we were talking that it was going to be roughly 30 something million to cap, right? It's probably gone up by now. And if we, if we're told that we have to remove everything, we're looking probably 150 million?
Oh, yeah. If we have to reboot, we're looking hundreds of millions. Not, I mean, it's going to be very expensive. So that, this fund does not cover that.
Right, but this, this, this part wasn't included in that.
I would say that the original estimates that we've got didn't really entertain a concrete structure like we're doing now.
Right.
Um, when I think was like, yeah, maybe it was Burns McDonald did original estimates. Um, but, uh, and prices through the last two years too have increased everything dramatically as well, so.
Well, fuel costs alone and the trucking, if we have to remove it, it'll, it'll probably be closer to 250 million.
Yeah, uh, and the, just the, the con, the cost of the concrete is, is, is gone up so much more too than what the original thinking was, so.
All right, thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes. 11 voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is 2022-238, an ordinance authorizing a sponsorship payment of $25,000 to Bruno Event Team LLC for the Memorial Health Championship presented by LRS pursuant to Article 7, Chapter 37, Section 37.62 of the 1988 City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended for the Springfield Convention and Visitors Bureau for Emergency Passage. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2022-238 on final passage.
So moved.
Second. The move in second. Any discussion?
Um, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman McMiniman?
So when we first got this, uh, um, golf tournament going, it was going to be a one-time, maybe a two-time sponsorship. So do we have anyone here to tell us what this is becoming? Is this becoming an annual sponsorship?
Well.
Scott, why don't you come up?
We haven't, we haven't sponsored it for quite a while, Mayor. Um, and we, we, we've, uh, I don't know how many years it's been since we did sponsor it, but, um, uh, Mr. Dahl contacted me regarding an opportunity that we have with our tourism, uh, to do a sponsorship and, and ask if I would be on board with it. And certainly I, I think we, uh, we get some hotel rooms out of it and, and they do a good job tracking everything. So.
Yeah, that's right. It's been a couple of years since we've, uh, had any sponsorship dollars go towards the Memorial Health Championship presented by LRS. Um, this is a little bit different. If you, if you see the comment sections of this, uh, you'll notice that, uh, this will include, uh, sponsored gate admissions, uh, not only for the community, but obviously visitors. So anybody that comes out for, on tournament days, July fourteenth through the seventeenth, there'll be a sponsored gated mission. There'll be complimentary gated mission for anyone that comes out. Uh, and I think this hits a lot of points. And the reason this is on emergency passage is when we have thirty-seven days out from the first tournament day, right? And so we need to get the messaging out. I know that, uh, Kate Peters is here and with the Memorial Health Championship. And, you know, we need to start, are they going to sell tickets or not? And for us, uh, this is a game changer, sure, for sure. Uh, because when we're talking about destination marketing, we're talking about putting the word out, asking our visitors to come in. Not only does it have free shuttles, but free entry, uh, and then everything else that we offer, right? So you park your car, we're walkable, we're affordable, uh, all the free, uh, sites that we have, we just, you combined it into that. Uh, this twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, can really, really make the difference between us, uh, having record crowds at the Memorial Health Championship and throughout the city of Springfield as well. So I think for that point, this is a little bit different. This isn't just a straight twenty-five thousand dollars. We're getting this added value, uh, in the gated missions. And it really allows us to, uh, excel our destination marketing. And I would also say it adds that community side too, right? Talk about quality of life. You talk about diversity, equity, inclusion. This is inclusive. This includes everybody in our city, everybody, uh, that's coming to visit us. I mean, anyone gets in free during tournament days. Um, and I think that's great. I think it's great for the city. I think it's a great way for the community to experience and certainly our visitors to experience.
So just continue with my questions here. So, um, will this become an annual sponsorship, do you think?
Um, I think if it's successful, absolutely.
And what funds are we using? Uh, this came on an emergency passage, so we haven't seen anything besides the, the, the talking that we're doing right now. So.
Sure.
Um, what funds are we using for this?
Uh, Fund twenty-one. Yep. The, the awards and grants, uh, object code will be used for this. We have funds in there and they're budgeted.
And the derivation of that is the hotel and motel taxes?
Oh, correct. Yes, Alderman. Yeah, absolutely. So, uh, the funds, well, directed from that because we are funded eighty-five percent by the local hotel tax dollars, so the visitor tax. So the visitors are funding, obviously, not only our operations at the SCBB, but anything that we do in our budget. So, um, yeah, absolutely. They're coming for the hotel tax.
Well, I guess I'll, I'll vote present on this because I, I just think we need to see more information. I don't know what the financial condition is of this, uh, of this event. You know, we've poured more money onto money that isn't needed, but, um, hopefully if this becomes an annual, we'll get more information next year and it won't be on emergency passage, hopefully.
And, and I, and I'll tell you, the only reason why is because of the timing. And, uh, CB Advisory Board, which they recommend this sponsorship and, and, and go in this direction, um, they just met. And so that's why we had to put on emergency passage. And again, I think the, uh, the sponsorship side of the gated missions, providing complimentary, uh, gated missions is the real reason this is on emergency passage at this point.
Alderman Gregory?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, I, I am going to support this. Um, you know, I can remember, you know, having a strong conversation about, you know, um, this, this, this bucket of money that we're using. And I think it's, it's important to, um, support local events because I, I feel like our families, um, the citizens' families of the city is part of the reason people come and they play some part in that. And there is a portion of, um, hotel motel fees that come from people who live right here in Springfield. And, uh, you know, I compliment your office as much as I fuss with you about, you know, really, really, you know, thinking about how we, how we do that, how we bring, you know, support events that, that are bringing in outside tourism and how we support events in our city to, to continue, um, you know, support the families that are here and the people that come visit us. So I do support this. And they have taken a break for a while and, you know, uh, in my mind, that's, you know, to let some others do it. And, and I think that's the way we do it. So I thank you.
Alderwoman Conlin?
Thank, thank you, Mayor. Um, Director, I just have a quick question. Um, so we all got these complimentary one-day passes.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that this sponsorship, does that mean like anyone from Springfield can go all, all four days or are they limited to one day?
No. And so those are, and by the way, those are the concepts. I just wanted to put in front of you that that's what they'll look like. And really what we want the spectators to do is we want them to register on the website. So for their complimentary passes, so they'll go to the Memorial Health Championship, uh, website and they'll register there. They will be able to get in at the gate, but we really encourage them to register at the website. But all four days, yes, July fourteenth through the seventeenth, all four days, uh, tournament days, that is. Uh, anyone can get in with, uh, sponsorship gated mission by Visit Springfield.
So with registering on the website, what, what's the purpose behind that? Are we trying to track people so we can do more marketing to them?
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, there's a data aspect of that, right? I mean, we, there's a collection aspect of that. So we would appreciate if, uh, you know, people attending would register at the website. Uh, that would certainly be helpful and help us figure out where people are coming for next year as well, right? Uh, because, you know, if we do see those record crowds, um, and, and certainly we want to know where they're coming from. Uh, we'll have some other technologies that will allow us to track that this year with the place or AI, but, um, certainly we encourage them to do that.
Well, thank you. I, I was able to go and spend a little bit of time there. I think it was twenty nineteen. Um, it's, it's a, it's a beautiful tournament, lots of, it's, it's, it's a lot of fun. And I don't, I don't golf, so it's coming from me.
I don't either.
If you'd like to say anything. And then Alderman Donlin?
Thank, thank you.
I would. Um, Alderman Gregory, thank you. Hi, Kate Peters. I'm the executive director for the Memorial Health Championship presented by LRS. And, um, many of you have seen me here and I've, I, I, I do intend to come back, Alderman McMinim. I think that what we're doing here is important. And I just want to share with you that, um, uh, we will have record-breaking crowds this year. And, um, we are working with the Springfield Segment Growth Alliance to underwrite a formal economic impact as a result of this tournament. And I think you're going to be, um, very impressed with its findings. We have a long-term future. I've been scratching and clawing for five or six years now to, to get this thing to this exciting spot. And I, I appreciate your past support. This is super exciting for us. Um, record-breaking crowds, um, tremendous economic impact and a really long-term future. And I'll, I'll be candid and, and say that our, our goal in twenty twenty-five is to get this, this tournament on national television. So that will bring tremendous exposure to our city. Um, these tickets, yes, we do want them to go online and register. We want the data. We want to email you. We want to spam you. Yes. Um, but.
We'll say inform.
Will we turn people away? Absolutely not. The whole idea is to get as many people out there as possible. With Memorial and LRS behind us, um, we are growing every day. We've got thirty-three days until tournament week. And, uh, we're adding new stuff all the time. And we just want it to be a destination. Um, the event is the rock and the impact are the ripples. And I think you're going to see a lot of ripples this year. It's going to be a lot of fun. So appreciate your support.
Send them all out to the bourbon tasting too.
Well, bring the bourbon out to the tournament. I'm going to need it.
Alderman Donlin?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. My, my question really is to Director Dahl, um, I, I appreciate.
Stay there, Kate. Kate, stay there. Okay.
Who, who's speaking? Is it my turn?
Yep.
Okay. Just making sure. Um, Director, uh, I like the concept of, I've always been supportive of heads in beds. That's important. Uh, vent, events like this. Uh, you mentioned that this will, the twenty-five thousand isn't just a sponsorship that goes towards the, we'll say the event. Um, it's for the, uh, attendance. What, what does attendance usually cost?
Twenty dollars. A, a grounds ticket is, is typically a twenty dollar ticket per person per day.
Okay, that's all. Thank you. Thank you for bringing this forward.
Alderwoman Williams?
Yeah, on the loan with it. So, um, uh, Scott, this is more for you, I guess. So, uh, what was the rooms last time that sold because of this event or estimate?
Well, we estimated two thousand room nights.
How, say that again?
Two thousand room nights.
Okay. And so this year you're?
Annually in the past two years.
You're expecting the same this, this time?
Uh, we'd hope more. We'd hope that this would encourage more people to come from out of town and, and spend the night. Again, not having to, to pay for their entry.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Repath?
So Kate, tell me a little bit about the, the parking. You guys transport from areas where you're parking from to bring people? Because there's limited parking at Panther Creek.
Correct. We are parking at Landmark Ford. They've been a great sponsor. They're also underwriting, um, air-conditioned coaches. So you park for free, you ride for free, drop you off right at the gate. So we've made it as convenient as you can possibly be. We parked last year inside the subdivision. And, uh, our friends at the Springfield Police Department, the Traffic Division suggested that we might reconsider that this year. So we're going to put everybody out at Landmark.
I got to tell you, Kate, you know, I've been around the city council for a little while. And, uh, when you picked up this, this tournament, you've, uh, put a lot into it. You got, you brought a lot of quality to it. I'm, I'm really pleased that you're involved in it. You've done a lot, not just for the tournament, but for Springfield.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Alderwoman DeSanto?
Thank you for coming here tonight. As you know, I have historically voted against this. Um, but with everyone being included, I think that is such an amazing feature. Because people who couldn't afford to or wouldn't be able to will now get to come out and see an event like this. And I think, and your goal has always been to get this on TV. So kudos. I think it's a great idea.
Thank you.
And then is there a limited number of tickets or?
Absolutely not. Share it with everyone. You know, with adding Memorial in their large footprint to, to our arsenal of sponsors, having them, they're really pushing, you know, uh, Lincoln Decatur, uh, Jacksonville, Taylorville. We'll be seeing significant numbers coming from those areas. But what we will also do, assuming this were to pass, is we will, um, begin, you know, enhanced marketing to other areas. We've got something ready to go saying, come join us. We're going to do some geofencing of other, um, areas, other golf tournaments and, and see if we can get those folks to head to Springfield as well. So.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion vote yes. Those opposed vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes ten voting yes, one voting present. Cheryl entertained a motion to spend with rules and first reading, place on first reading Agenda number twenty twenty-two dash two fifty-seven, an ordinance appointing Frank W. McNeil to the Springfield Economic and Community Development Commission.
Wait a minute.
Later.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Motion carries. Cheryl entertained a motion to spend the rules and place on first reading Agenda number twenty twenty-two dash two fifty-eight, an ordinance approving the appointment of Nicole Clements to the Housing Policy Advisory Council. So moved. Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Motion carries. Cheryl entertained a motion to spend the rules and place on first reading Agenda number twenty twenty-two dash two fifty-nine, an ordinance approving small business redevelopment assistance to several businesses utilizing far East tax increment finance funds in an amount not to exceed four hundred and four thousand dollars for the Office of Planning and Economic Development. So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed say nay. Motion carries. Cheryl entertained a motion to spend the rules and place on first reading Agenda number twenty twenty-two dash two sixty, an ordinance approving small business redevelopment assistance to several businesses utilizing cannabis tax funds in an amount not to exceed six hundred and twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and nineteen dollars for the Office of Planning and Economic Development. So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Motion carries. Is there any unfinished business coming before the council? Alderwoman DeSanto?
Thank you. I'm getting some calls again about some damage to houses on Fifth Street because of the rail improvement project. I know Jimmy Austin from Hanson was out at one of the addresses today inspecting the damage. And it looks like I'm going to be bringing some additional ordinances forward. Um, these houses are in bad shape. And I've been talking about this for three years now. So, I mean, like, like I've said before, I, I respect the vision of what the rail improvement project is doing, but it has completely destroyed entire neighborhoods. And that isn't the fault of the people that live there. So.
Any other unfinished business? Uh, the Levitt Concert Series, uh, it's last week. I think they had a well over a thousand people. And, uh, it's Thursday at six or six-thirty?
Six.
Six. And then also the Lucky Horseshoes had their first, uh, game on Saturday. Um, and tonight they're playing at six-thirty as well as Thursday. And then, um, as far as other things happening today, Municipal Band is playing at Dunkin Park at seven-thirty. And Oak Ridge Cemetery tonight starts their Lincoln Tomb Retirement of the Flag at seven o'clock. Alderwoman DeSanto?
Already talked.
Okay. Alderman Gregory?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, I just wanted to mention, uh, the Y Block, it, it, it really, uh, kicked off. And I would encourage everybody to come down. I was down there, uh, briefly last week and it's, it's really nice and, and it's grown every year. I, I looked at a picture from the first year that they did it and we had the little bitty stage facing the opposite way. And, you know, now to see that and how it's really coming along is, is really been a good thing. Um, you know, so go to that. And then on Saturday, and I'm going to go check it out because I think this is cool, but there's some Highland Games with some Strongman, um, um, down there. Down there is called, put on by the Ancient Athletics and, and St. Andrew's Society. So, um, they'll be doing some cool stuff, throwing some things that, uh, we see on TV a lot. And, uh, so I look forward to going down there and see if I can pick up one of them myself.
At the Y Block?
The Highland Games.
Yeah, is that at the Y Block this time?
Is that at the Y Block?
Yes, Saturday, July eleventh.
Is there any new business coming before the council?
Can you tell me what that buzzing is behind that?
That's a good question. We'll have to find that out. It's a door squeaking. It's the door. Alderwoman Purchase?
They need some oil. Um, the African American History Mu- Museum just received a grant from the Springfield Memorial Foundation. And they have it for their history camp for grades four through six, June thirteenth through the seventeenth. It's first, first come, first served and it's free to the public. So please sign the kiddos up.
Alderwoman DeSanto?
Um, thank you. District one eighty-six will finally have their last day of school this coming Friday. Um, for those of us with kids in District one eighty-six or are married to people who teach in District one eighty-six, it's a very exciting day. It's been a very long school year. Uh, so just want to make everyone aware that there's going to be more kids out and about on their bikes, walking, that sort of thing. Um, but I also wanted to bring up pop-up parties. Because we had one in Ward Six on Saturday night that resulted in someone being shot, a teenage girl. And, um, you know, we really need to hold the, i- if we know it's a location that's holding these pop-up parties, we really need to hold that location responsible. We know there are places that they just pop up at, like Quick and Easy. They're not planning pop-up parties. But, um, this is bad. It's bad for the neighborhood. Um, there are people, uh, you know, heading through people's yards on Fourth Street. There were two hundred cars lined up. There were several shots fired. My phone was ringing from midnight to three AM on Sunday. Um, it's not okay. This is in the middle of a neighborhood. Uh, it's disruptive. It's dangerous. It's loud. It's, it's just disrespectful to the homeowners. And there are a lot of homeowners there. So. And I, I really appreciate the Springfield Police Department's response. Um, I just talked to Officer Musson at about eight AM on Sunday morning and he had been there. I'm like, I'm sorry I'm calling so early. He's like, it's okay. Um, but he had been, been on the scene the night before. So, um, I appreciate all, all that you did. But it's, it's a bad situation and I, I appreciate you being on top of it.
Yeah, absolutely. I'd be the first to say that, um, I'm one hundred percent against the pop-up parties too, right? And the Springfield Police Department will do absolutely everything that we can to take a proactive approach. We put together, uh, a task force that consists of, uh, extra officers on the weekend as well as partnership with the state police in the county. Uh, so, um, we've, uh, I've got some stats here. Um, off the top of my head, I believe, uh, the last three weekends, uh, we made, uh, over fifty traffic stops as a result of these, uh, extra details resulting in ninety-nine citations, uh, nine arrests and seven firearms recovered. So we're committed to proactively going after these individuals. And let me make this very clear to anyone listening that may want to have a pop-up party. It will not be tolerated in this community. Uh, Springfield Police Department is not going to sit back on our heels and let this happen. That's not fair to the residents of the city and it won't happen. And I'll give kudos to Officer Musson, who's in the back, uh, keeping us safe this evening. Uh, he's working hard on the backend as far as the, uh, location. He's working hard on the back end as far as the location on South Fourth or Fifth, ensuring that we hold those individuals responsible. And we are going after the owners of the properties and let them know that, again, it's not going to be tolerated. If we can get, along with the help of Corporation Council's office, if we can get temporary restraining orders on these locations ahead of time, we'll do that. If we can hold them accountable post-party, we'll do that as well. So that's our stance as well.
Chief Scarlett? They'll be prosecuted criminally and civilly as much as possible.
Whatever we can, you bet.
Yes. Yep. Anybody have something related to that?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on what he was.
Go ahead.
I want to congratulate you. I know you've cut into the people coming from Peoria and Decatur. You're knocking them out pretty good. And that's going to send a message back to those communities because this used to be a free-for-all here. And now they understand that we're going after them. So congratulations to you and your team.
Well, it's definitely the men and women that are out there doing the work and I appreciate that. And I think it's important to point out that a lot of the arrests that we made are people that are coming from outside our community. So again, the message is not going to be tolerated. If they want to have the parties, they can have it in their own community.
Thank you.
Sure. Any other questions on this point? Alderwoman Purchase and then Alderman Gregory?
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up with, we're more than happy to have your neighborhood come to our task force meeting. I think that the information you just said, that we should bring our neighborhoods in and kind of give them a little bit of info, the presidents of the Neighborhood Association so that we can have that community engagement too and they know what's going on. So I would like, now that Alderwoman DeSanto said it just happened this weekend, I kind of want to ramp it up to get that meeting going. And I did have my first ride along with the golf cart this weekend. I wouldn't say it was a pop-up party, but it was a lot of people outside and on the sidewalks, many of your officers did a phenomenal job with getting it taken care of within two minutes and before they got out of the club. I do want to emphasize, I don't know what we can do, but when the clubs let out, they need to go home. So I don't know what we can do because the owners were saying, well, that's not my property, this is the city sidewalk. So I need help understanding how that works and how much time do we give them and what can we do to school them along? But they were very respectful this weekend while I was out there and people were getting off of the sidewalks pretty quickly. But I could see for the summertime that they may be an issue.
Yeah, I think establishing our presence pretty early on in the summertime party season, if you will, to let them know that when the club's done, it's time to go home. So the sooner that we can get that message out there, the better off. We can talk offline about that as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Gregory?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I agree definitely with Alderwoman Purchase. I definitely think we need to get our neighborhood associations involved because they have some, you know, specific concerns and stuff with the pop-up parties. We've dealt with them, you know, in War II significantly over the years. But, you know, on top of these parties, and I really echo what we're talking about with businesses being responsible. And some of our businesses, you know, I get it, we're in tough times and we want to make money, but we cannot have irresponsible parties. And I think like in that situation there, thank God this young lady has lived on, but we have some areas in War II where, you know, I rode by today and there's, you know, three memorials from people dying at these spots. And I'm not blaming the business itself, but I think, you know, we have to work together with them to say, hey, we need to put some more lights up or, you know, I know they all got cameras and, you know, we have some type of protocols, but it's not enough, you know? And, you know, at some point, it's just like, this is not a good business for my community because people are dying up here, you know? And so I'm really frustrated by that and I really want to work with you and the businesses to come up with some solutions to really try to drive this meeting spot at a couple places. I also want to talk about, I do think it's, you know, important for us, and I know we have some short conflict, to work with our businesses. I have advised mine in the community when they have a large advertised party, some celebrity coming or something, to let you guys know so we can try to set up some type of traffic control after those parties. Because I think it's important. They have to control their lots, we have to control our streets and, you know, I just think they need to work with us when they're having those big parties because, you know, it drives some problems for the people who live in the community.
I would agree 100% with you. I will say the traffic control comes with, you know, a rather large manpower contingent, you know? So that's something that has to be considered. But responsible business holders, you know, holding them accountable, not only for the actions that take place on their property, but for the after actions and what transpires there is very important.
Aye. Aye, thank you. Alderman Falcensi?
Yes, this is a little bit off the subject.
Your mic is off.
There you go. It's on.
It's on now.
Go ahead.
A little bit off the subject, but I'd like to invite everybody out to the fairgrounds to view the trucks that we have coming into town. There's already.
A bunch.
100 trucks over there that are beautiful. I mean, and I'm not a truck guy, but they, these undoubtedly have been well taken care of. They put a lot of money into it, a lot of time. And it's probably because, I heard where one guy paid $1,800 to come here from Texas to display his truck. So I would encourage everybody to go out to the fairgrounds starting Thursday. Well, actually tomorrow's a good day. Maybe you can get in free, I don't know.
Hey, hey, hey.
But it starts Thursday through Friday and Saturday to view these trucks and they're beautiful. They really are.
Is there free cheeseburgers at Falcensi's afterwards?
Yes.
Yes, it is. They have free pizza in the parking lot from 1:00 to 2:00 in the morning.
One to 1:00.
Just wait, we'll be out soon.
Watch what he says. Any other new business from the council?
No.
We do have Nicole Day. I think she wanted to speak about the business disturbance or the block party, I think. I think that's what it was. You state your name and the address. Before you get started, I want to make sure we read the rules. We have, I asked Corporation Council to make sure everybody stays within same parameters and limit comments to five minutes. Address your comments to myself as the presiding officer. And then we're not required to respond to any questions that you may pose, but keep them to items on the agenda or to the jurisdiction of the council. And then don't use any language which insults, demeans, personally attacks, or defames any person. Examples include, but are not limited to racial attacks, personal slurs, name-calling, and allegations of personal wrongdoing. So with that, I appreciate if you'd give your name and address for the council.
Yes, my name is Nicole Day. I live at 1401 South Fourth Street on the corner of Fourth and Pine. So, dear City Council, thank you for the opportunity and the time to address you today about a concern that I have for my home and my neighborhood. I live by His Own Music. They are located on the 1400 block of Fifth Street in Ward 6. This business has been causing issues in our neighborhood for over a year now. Police have been dispatched here numerous times. Here's a little insight to the issues that we have been dealing with, with this business. Late night parties on Friday and Saturday, music so loud coming from over a block away that I can hear it inside my house. Not only hear the music playing, but able to tell you what song is playing. People will start gathering around 9:00 to 10:00 p.m. at night. They line the streets of Pine between Fourth and Fifth Street and Fourth Street. These cars are driving reckless, pulling in and out of neighborhoods' driveways and looking for spots to park throughout the neighborhood. When parking, they completely block driveways where you are not able to exit. After parking, they are very loud and disrespectful, walking to His Own Music. People have been urinating in our yards and neighbor yards while also gathering in yards. On numerous occasions, people have been dancing and screaming on top of their personal vehicles. At one point in time, we had a woman standing on the car threatening homeowners as they walk into their house with her children. The police did arrive and ask her to leave and she was removed from the situation. Almost every time, we would have groups of people standing and completely blocking Fourth Street or Pine right in front of His Own Music with their cars. Again, police arrive and try and disperse the crowd. At any given party, we would see 75 to 150 people. During the winter months, we have not had these issues. With the nicer weather, we have started seeing parties amp up again. Within the last few weeks, there have been small groups gathering at His Own Music, still loud and disrespectful, leaving beer cans and trash up and down our streets. This past weekend, His Own Music returned to its unprofessional partying in our neighborhood. Around 9:30, I noticed numerous cars turning around in my driveway and parking up and down Fourth Street. This year, most people attending the party are not parking on Pine in front of the music, His Own Music. They're parking in the alley parking lot or on Fourth Street only. Large groups of people walking around the corner to His Own Music. I estimated around 50 people parking on Fourth Street alone to attend this party. At this party, one teen girl was shot. Our neighborhood is full of families. I personally do not want my children growing up around the possibility of being hit by a stray bullet. We did not choose to live next to a bar or a party venue. We do not want to raise our kids in this environment. Last summer, I contacted the Ward 6 Alderman to express my concerns with the business. I reached out to her every night we had an issue. I'm sure she's tired of hearing from me. In addition, I have also spoke to the business owner personally, expressing the neighborhood's concerns and frustrations with his business. The owner has stated numerous times that he is a community figure and does many outreach programs. But his behavior has proven to be the exact opposite. This business has done nothing but bring dangerous driving, trash, public urination, large group of reckless, disrespectful people, loud music, and now gun violence. I bring this to your attention to help save our neighborhood. We do not want this business to continue to operate in our neighborhood. I do want to thank the Alderman for bringing it up tonight and all of the police officers who have responded over the last year to help us with this issue. Again, I thank you for your time on this very serious matter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman McMenamin?
Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. That was a very good report. I didn't know anything about this until tonight, but this looks like a clear-cut case of nuisance.
Yes.
A flagrant nuisance. And if it's ongoing and recurring, where are our nuisance violation tickets being issued to this gentleman? And let's get on the ball here and use the enforcement tools that we have. So this is intolerable and unacceptable.
Thank you.
And I would also like to note, this is not zoned as an entertainment venue. It's supposed to be a music production studio. It's not a bar, it's not a restaurant. These types of events are not supposed to be held in this type of business and he's in violation of his zoning.
Correct. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Alderwoman Conley, sorry.
And Mayor, this is probably a question for your Corporation Council, but Alderwoman DeSanto answered the first half of my question. Is this even remotely zoned for this? So what steps do we have at our disposal then to take some formal action here?
Well, a couple of items. One is, she mentioned they're blocking driveways. I mean, that's a clear ticket and tow situation, so that's what we should be doing. And as Chief said, get there early and respond to it. Otherwise, it grows too large or you can't disperse it. So, you know, we can have SkyWatch, we'd ask for individuals that would have any Ring Doorbell footage. That'd be extremely helpful if we could identify the individuals, so. But I'd let the chief speak to.
Mr. Mayor, you know, I mentioned the word nuisance on purpose. Our city code is very clear. Nuisance is defined as activity which disrupts the public peace. And so we don't have to search very far to find the enforcement tools here, so let's get on the ball.
Especially if they're violating their zoning.
They're violating their zoning.
But as we know, the lady came up.
The nuisance is real easy to apply.
She described what happened. And there's perpetrators. And so, okay, we disperse them and, you know, now they go over to Quick and Easy or they go elsewhere. So the whole key is to enforce. And it goes way beyond nuisance.
Well, we got a location, Mayor.
It's a matter of civil disturbance. You arrest them, you take them to court. The property owner, you take them to court and you make them pay. That's how you do it. You don't give them tickets where they may collect or may pay. You have to arrest and move in that direction. Enforcement is what will cure it.
That's exactly right. And our nuisance city code gives discretionary authority to set the amount of the fine and we got to set it up there high. We got, need the administrative law judge, it's got to, we need the tickets to get this process started and we can penalize hard and tough.
There, if I may, Mayor. There are obviously certain requirements within the nuisance abatement law, certain offenses that Musson committed.
This is, there's various areas of our city code that talk about nuisance. I'm not talking about nuisance abatement. I'm talking about activity which disrupts the public, not that more complicated thing where you got to find criminal violations.
And the quickest way to do it, especially people visiting Springfield, you start towing their cars. You start arresting. That's how you get rid of it. You don't ticket. I mean, you can ticket, but that's not going to resolve the issue. You have to really hit them where it hurts and so they know we are serious about enforcement to the nth degree. And the nth degree is taking them to court.
Public Works officials can issue nuisance tickets and the fine is discretionary. And so that's another means to start the process. And we got a location and an owner and a business. You just got to go to that person. We don't have to play around with this.
We've done that. Officer Musson has done a great job locating and identifying the owner. He's made contact with the owner and we will hold him accountable and responsible if and when we can. That's what I would tell you.
Nuisance is a civil violation.
Springfield Police Department will take a proactive response on all these.
We understand what you're saying on the public works side of things. But again, when this happens at night, we should be towing, tow vehicles. That's where it's at. Start arresting people.
Utilize whatever resources we can. Absolutely.
So we'll have further discussions, I'm sure, and action as well. So thank you very much. But on the nuisance side, Alderman McMenamin, I understand what you're saying on the public works side of things so you can prosecute on the civil side of it.
And we can have follow-up witnesses. We don't have to have a public works official there that night. All we got to do is provide sufficient evidence for the public works inspector to issue the nuisance ticket.
Again, if there's any footage from Ring Doorbell or anything of that nature, it'd be appreciated. Alderwoman Purchase?
I just would like to follow up with what Alderman McMenamin said. It's not that easy because I've seen it happen over at Quick and Easy. So when we're outnumbered, it's really hard for you to have the tow trucks come in and have just a massive situation get out of hand. But I do like how our chief of police has said that now we have like the state police coming in, we got the county coming to help us when we're short on man.
The difference between Quick and Easy and this is that we've got a sponsor for the activity. Quick and Easy is not sponsoring the activity. People are showing up without being invited. This year, you got an individual with loud music coming from his residence. It's a different situation. We got the enforcement tools, let's use it.
I'm done.
Alderwoman Purchase, anything else?
I'm done.
Thank you. Next, we have Sean, doesn't have a last name, regarding urban farm idea. Jane McBride?
My topic as usual is animal control. I want to start out by thanking the Springfield Police Department. We have had two bad neglect cases in the last month. And in order to get those administered and taken care of, the first step is for the police department to work with us to get animal control out there so we have all three jurisdictions. Happy news is this police department under Chief Ken here has figured out the jurisdictions and so we are all working very well together at this point.[1680.83] and so we are all working very well together at this point. We had a case in May twenty-one, uh, we had a particular address with a history and we had seven squads out there helping us, um, get that under control. So not only do we have to have the police department out there to get animal control to help with any empowerment, but we also need a police report, uh, to prosecute the matter. Uh, the state's attorney wants that, and they quickly turned around the, the, the police report for us and we have been able to proceed, uh, with an eight-count complaint and a forfeiture petition. Um, this past weekend, uh, we had another incident, again, we had great police response and we've got that police report on file with the state's attorney. Um, and we are experiencing good cooperation with animal control, which is a wonderful thing. So I have some positive things to say about animal control tonight. Um, it does seem the communication has been better, um, I know we have happier campers, uh, in the shop itself, um, and so I think we have made progress, but, um, it is, um, a step, and that's another reason why I'm here tonight, is because I want to say it is a first step and we do have a couple of concerns remaining. Um, an interim director has been, um, named, and, um, it was confirmed that she was just going to be the interim at first, um, however, at the public health committee meeting last week, um, now the under, what they indicated is they aren't going to start a search for another six months, and, uh, they also upped her salary and, um, have, there's no indication that they're going to start a search right away. Animal control, just like everything else, is an agency with an expertise and these people need to be trained. It's not only the shelter management, as I have said time and time again, but you're also running a law enforcement agency in the form of animal control. Um, Ms. Kenan does not have any qualifications in this regard, training nor qualifications nor experience, she came from the environmental side of things. I have a little background in both of these areas, environmental is different than animal enforcement. We're talking about criminal, regulatory, dangerous dogs, all that kind of stuff. So right now, I am very concerned about the level of expertise. Uh, Ms. O'Neil even said at the meeting, um, that she's very happy her new employees show up every day, which, which shows the stress level, but if you have somebody at the head who knows what they're doing, that stress level goes down a hundred percent. So, I, I, my comment back to the colony is that you need to start that search right now. Um, and you, there are people out there, a lot of people out there that do have these trainings and certifications right now. The other thing that's already been in the works and, uh, prior to even the recent developments is that there is an MOU that has been developed with best friends, it's a national animal organization, to come in and do an assessment. Evidently, everything is finalized with that except a county signature and a scheduling of that. It is absolutely imperative at this juncture that that be done, they do it on both sides of the shop, with, both with animal control and with, um, shelter management, they can help, they have sat on people's search committees before, um, they have a lot of expertise in these areas, so that assessment should be, uh, make, um, gotten underway, uh, immediately. Um, we've got some good people in there, um, uh, on the animal care side, um, Andrew Lehman I've worked with for, for years and years, um, but what I'm understanding is not only is he doing animal care, but he's also doing outreach to rescues, he's reviewing policies. The volunteers used to do a lot of that outreach to rescues and they're very familiar with these rescues, so, um, we shouldn't be overloading our new people with things that are so new to them. I mean, Andrew was a vet tech, he didn't run an animal shelter, so we need people in there, um, to, to do that. And so I'm here to apprise this, this is where we seem to be standing, and for any of you who tend to have influence with the county, I would appreciate it if you would assert yourselves a little bit and say, we have got to get the expertise in there, and then we can adequately collaborate and continue to bring all the great resources that the nonprofits have to bear, uh, working in a very positive environment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is, uh, Michelle Gillen. You'd, uh, state your name and address for the council, we'd appreciate it.
My name is Michelle Gillen, I live at fifteen twelve South Fourth Street. Uh, this was actually going to be the second issue I was going to bring up, but I'm going to make it the first since it's already been brought up very eloquently by Nicole. Um, I've lived at my house for twenty-two years, and what happened over the weekend is unconscionable and intolerable. Um, as it turned out, my neighbor that lives at fifteen hundred South Fourth Street ended up, uh, allowing some kids during the shooting to take refuge in his backyard while this was going on. They proceeded to fill him in that there was, there was well over a hundred kids at this place, some of age, some not, and they also let him know that Hizo Music was charging admission to this. So I see that tax money that may or not be noted as far as what the city will be getting as far as tax money, that's another problem that I have with this. It's very upsetting, I know a lot of the neighbors that I was talking to are thinking about moving and getting out and selling their homes in this market, it would sell regardless, because, uh, there's plenty of people that want a house right now. Uh, very frustrating, um, I mean, granted, nobody died here, but I believe Alderman Conley can attest to a nick femoral artery, could have potentially caused a death in about two minutes. Um, rather than complacently counting our blessings that we aren't Buffalo or Uvalde, Texas, or dozens of other communities who have been dealing with shootings in the past several months, I request a zero tolerance stance on gun ownership and use, and use that isn't directly regarding to self-defense or sports slash hunting. Any business connected to events that contribute to this activity should be shut down permanently, not to be opened again nor any related facsimile by said owner. Um, Hizo was clearly not monitoring those on the property, I don't know what the tax income, uh, benefit cost is on that, but I'm sure you'd be able to talk to them and find out what that is. Um, the second, the, actually, the first thing you want to bring up, but the second one, was an issue that happened on Saturday afternoon, May twenty-eighth, Memorial Day weekend. Fifteen hundred block of South Fourth Street was quickly overwhelmed with two fire trucks, an ambulance, and a rotation of five to seven city police cars. The owner of three oh six East Cedar and her son had come to mow the property, and upon checking the house, which is uninhabitable due to not having working heat nor AC, a dead man, presumably homeless, was found in the upstairs bathroom. A coroner's vehicle came in due time to pick him up. At that time, no one could discern an identity, the man's age, how long he had been dead, how long he'd been squatting on the property, much less the cause of death. The neighbor who approached the police trying to find out what was going on was told he would probably end up John Doe and nothing more would probably be done with it. Now granted, uh, the unfortunate deceased man was breaking the law as far as, um, trespassing, and the owners probably should have been monitoring their property a little better. Nevertheless, I've been dealing with the encroaching of our homeless in this neighborhood for close to fourteen years. It said an unfortunate man in this case slipped through the institutional cracks, but I think we're spending a lot, too much time focusing on their First Amendment rights to bully, panhandle, live an alternative lifestyle, and it, it just seems, and if I'm wrong, feel free to correct me, but I've been told by well-educated and experienced human service workers and administrators that the majority of some of these people are mentally ill or dealing with mental illness. I think this fact should be exercised to move them and to protect the general public from harassment. I attended the Old Capital Art Fair several weeks ago, I was aggressively approached by three panhandlers while I was strolling down the street looking at art booths without any money on me, without a credit card, just an ID in case somebody hit me over the head and decided to take advantage of me. I don't know what the answer is to this question, um, if we continue to turn the First Amendment right into a grifter's loophole. Thank you for your time, and thank you.
Thank you for expressing that opinion. Next is Bachman Hakim.
Mr. Sensel, thank you for bringing up about the railroad tearing up house, because, you know, my sister, Sister Ruth passed away July first of last year, and one year mark is coming up, okay? Because the railroad tore up our house. Thank you again for bringing that up.
You're welcome.
Mayor, the last time I was here, you said you would find out about what CWLP is, and the water department is going to do when the fire department come out there and put my house fire out, when there was no water coming out of the fire hydrant, and who's going to take responsibility for the fire? Because the investigator that actually investigated from the Springfield Fire Department, it was his first assignment on the job, okay? I had, we had another investigator come in from out of Kentucky and pointed and showed and took pictures and said it was the power company's fault, because one leg of the electric line going into the house was live while the other one was dead. Because when they pulled the meter and put the two plastic blocks on, one of the blocks was cracked.
Yeah, I'm not sure if, uh, what's the address on that?
That was twenty-two thirty-one North Third. That was that trailer fire.
Right. And that's what we'll have to check, if we service it or if hammer it, that's what I'm not sure about, but I'll have Ed Canny and, um, Doug Brown, he's over here, to, uh, get with you on that and we'll follow up with that. So, I know in the initial report, that, that was conflicting with what you'd said.
Yes. Okay, and, you know, like I said, last time I was here or before, which was about three weeks ago, and you said you'd have some answers for me, you know, what, what's going to happen, you know?
Yeah, we-
Why, why didn't-
Yeah, with Ed Canny, he's the head inspector for the fire department.
Right.
He's right back here.
Now-
Uh, either way.
Now, why wasn't the fire department informed that there was no water in that fire hydrant to put out my house fire?
Well, that's something he'd be able to address.
Actually, I'll just make sure that-
Sure.
-it doesn't come up again. That fire hydrant did work, it didn't shut off, uh, so we did not have a problem with water.
Then why did you bring in two tankers and hook up to them?
We can discuss it in the hallway, but we always respond with four engines, and it was a typical response. Again, that hydrant, we can, I'll discuss it with Sam in the hall, but it really doesn't affect the council, but thank you.
Right.
Well, they say the hydrant worked, but Delaney's Restaurant, they had to close because they didn't have no water. The neighbors around me didn't have no water.
Yeah, that's something he'd be able to discuss with you with, uh, Doug Brown as well.
Got it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Mike Strack. Is there anybody else which to address, Count?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman McMenamin.
I think our police chief has left the chambers, but I just want to make sure that, um, our police are aware of the enumeration of particular nuisances. It's very specific, and it doesn't really have to do with criminal enforcement, but the presence of any of the following is a nuisance. Any sound which interferes with the peace or comfort or just, or that which disturbs the quiet enjoyment of any person in the city. So the point I'm trying to make is, we were told by Ms. Gillen and by Nicole Day that we had a continuing condition here of loud noise for months, going on for months, and I'm sorry, uh, former officer Redpath isn't interested in this, but I think we-
You heard it three times.
No, you didn't hear me refer to ordinance section ninety-eight point zero one. So Chief, that's the ordinance I'm referring to, ninety-eight point zero one, and it specifically says that any noise which disturbs the public can be written up as a nuisance. It's not a criminal offense, it's a nuisance, it can go to fines and it can go to administrative court. The point I'm trying to make is, if we had this condition going on for months, we got to know how to address the problem. If, if a whole neighborhood's getting disrupted with noise, we got to know how to deal with it. And we had a known location, this wasn't a pop-up party in the sense that it was on public space, this is on an individual or a business creating a nuisance. And that's the, that's the point I'm trying to make as an attorney, we got to know what our code says and how to use our code to, to take care of problems.
We appreciate it. Any other discussion? Is there a motion for adjournment?
It's almost.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post and aye. We're adjourned, thank you very much.
I didn't know if you were done when I asked you to give the spotlight, I was going to ask, which one of you ordered this? I was too, because the sun was coming off of this and I-
Yep.